We'll start the meeting then. So I've got confirmation in the courtroom. Call the meeting to order. Kind of adoption of the public agenda, please.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second.
Second, thank you. Anything to add?
I'd just like to, Mr. Chair, this might be the time to remind directors that when you're not speaking, to shut off your video and your mics, because if Kayuka Checklet's are having a problem connecting, we don't need to add to it by having our devices on, our mics and our videos.
Good point. Thank you, Director Lee.
Thank you.
Okay. A question on the adoption. Is anyone opposed? Hearing uncarried. No petitions. Adoption of minutes for the October 2nd meeting. Director Wally, second by.
First.
All right, Director Davis, second. Any airs or emissions? Seeing none. Question on receipt. Anyone opposed? Seeing uncarried. No business rising for the minutes. Chairs report. My only portion about the chairs report this morning is welcoming all our, our directors to the call meeting and all our, our friends and neighbors from Kayuka Checklet's First Nations. Looking forward to the workshop as we begin here very soon. So on that, I'll move on to staff reports. Motion received my short verbal report.
Move.
Move to second. Joe?
Davis.
Question on it. Anyone opposed? Seeing uncarried. So we'll move on to staff reports. And at this time, Mr. Yates, how are we doing for connections for our friends in Kayuka?
I'm looking at the list right now, Mr. Chairman. I see there are still a few who have joined. I know we had sent out a considerable number of invitations and I don't see all of those on the list yet. So I'm assuming they're still having some problems. I will just have to sort those out as we get to it, I guess.
Okay. So then at this time, we'll move forward. So I'll go, motion received and report to the CIO.
I would move that the report from the CIO be received.
Second.
Thank you. Seconder. Enter the CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess what we can do at this point is turn it over to the facilitator.
If I may interrupt.
Oh, we have to do.
I think once, once the report has been received, then there's a, there's a secondary motion here to.
Right.
Great, thank you. So I'll call question on receipt. Anyone opposed? Seeing uncarried. Item B, the workshop be convened to discuss membership for Kayuka Checklet's First Nations?
I would move that a workshop be convened to discuss membership of the Kayuka Checklet's First Nation app on the regional district board.
Thank you. Second by. Director Wally, thank you.
And Tom, could, Tom, could we please have the actual item showing on the screen?
Okay, so if everybody's ready then I'll turn the, uh, over to Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Ingram.
Good morning. Morning, everyone. Thank you for having us at this presentation. I'm going to open this, my share tray for a presentation, which will lay out what we're going to be doing for the, for the next couple of hours. And is everyone able to see my screen?
I think everybody can see it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is there not some protocol before we get started in the presentation? Or is this just a presentation to our board?
Um, all I've got down on my agenda, Director Cornfield's is introduction and welcomes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Perhaps I could respond. I do believe there are some protocols that are, that will be apparent once we get into the presentation. See an agenda there just put up. So if that's what we're referring to, I covered.
It was the agenda portion of the report. And that, I don't know if you've got that slide handy, Tom, but I look in at the, the, sorry, Mr. Yates called order and reading of IISAAK by the KCFM.
Yes, that's ESAC.
Yeah.
Um, yes, I'll be reading that. I should be reading that right at the beginning here.
Yes.
Wasn't sure if we're waiting for everyone to join or if we were going ahead.
Hey, good morning, Kevin. Good to see you again.
Good morning. Good morning.
Okay, so then, Alter Director Jules, would it be appropriate at this time for you to read?
Yes, I can read it right now. It's, it's, it's something we read before every one of our meetings, before the, before our ledge or, or executive. So, um, yes, I, I could read it right now.
Thank you.
Hupatch ESAC. Number one, listen generously and do not interrupt people speaking. Number two, be hard on ideas and soft on people. Three, speak within the time allotted by the chairperson and allow others to be heard after, after being recognized by the chairperson. Four, come to the meeting with a positive attitude. If you have a criticism or an issue, please also propose a solution. Be positive as we all want to get this right. Five, treat members with respect both during the meeting and outside of the meeting. Six, look at things from a perspective other than your own. Be open minded. Seven, be prompt in arriving to the meeting and in returning from breaks. Eight, limit your side conversations. Nine, when an agenda or topic item has been discussed, do not bring the same topic back up again. And 10, do not discuss personal issues during our meeting. This is our self-government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this time, I'll move back to Mr. Ingram.
And thank you, Kevin. So that was the reading of ESAC. This is just the agenda for, for today. We'll do a little bit of a project overview and an update since we last met back on October the 8th. We will be having a guest speaker come in at 11:00. That's John Jack, the ACRD Board Chair and Director from Huayt First Nations and a Huayt First Nations legislator. And then I will be passing it over to Kevin and he will be running through a presentation on SRD's newest member come April, April 1st on Kayuka Checklet's. And following that, there will be a Q and A and discussion. And really, the goals for today are, you know, to continue getting a better idea of the First Nations and Manelth Treaty and membership in the SRD. And really, the focus is on getting to know SRD's newest member, Kayuka Checklet's First Nations or KCFM, and getting ready for next steps and continued collaboration from, you know, going forward from April 1st, 2021 and, and beyond. We've had the, um, the reading of ESAC, but I would like to turn it over and perhaps do a, a round of introductions, which I know can be, uh, in this new world, digital world of ours. Always a bit of adventure sometimes, but I thought we could begin by perhaps having guests from Kayuka Checklet's First Nations introduce themselves and then the Strathcona Regional District Board and staff who are on the call and will follow it up with just the project support team who are on the call. So I don't know, Kevin, if you want to kick things off here.
Sorry, what was that? Just our introductions?
Yeah, we're just gonna do a quick round of introductions just, and we'll start with the folks on the, on the phone or online from KCFM.
Alrighty, I'll, I can go through the list here to see. I'm Kevin Jules. I'm the elected vice chief for Kayuka Checklet's at First Nations and the one, the member that will be joining the Strathcona Regional District come April 1st, 2021. I know I will see who is all on, on the call or on the call at the moment. I'll go by the list here. I see Cynthia Blackstone is on the call.
Hi, thanks, Kevin. It's Cynthia Blackstone. I'm the Chief Administrative Officer for the Kayuka Checklet's at First Nations. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. And then I also see Francis. Francis Gillette is on the call.
Good morning, Francis Gillette. Sitting in my Lands and Resources for Kayuka Checklet's.
Thank you, Francis. Then we have Janice, Janice John Smith, who's on as well.
Good morning. My name is Janice John Smith. I'm on the Legislature Hot Work Council and I hold the education portfolio. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. And then I see Jeff Nielsen is on.
Hi, Gav. Jeff Nielsen, Director of Lands and Resources for Kayuka Checklet's. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, next is Lilian, Lilian Jack.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Lilian Jack and I'm a legislator for the Kayuka Checklet's Nation and my portfolio is housing and infrastructure.
Thank you. And I see Samantha Christensen is on.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Samantha Christensen and I hold the community services portfolio for the Kayuka Checklet's at First Nation. Thank you for having us as your guests today.
Thank you, Samantha. And Tony Hanson is also on.
Good morning. I'm Tony Hanson, newly elected chief of Kayuka Checklet's.
Thank you, Tony. And I see we have one call in, I think, I believe that is Matthew Jack.
Yes, good morning, everyone. Matthew Jack, Kayuka Checklet's, elected official, also appointed chairman of our legislature and I hold the portfolio for governor.
Thank you, Matthew. And I believe that is all that we have on at the moment.
Great.
Thank you, Kevin. So I'm Brad Unger. I'm the mayor of the Village Gold River and the current regional district chairperson. And I'll just go through, introduce yourself one at a time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Unger. I'm Andy Adams. I'm the mayor for the city of Campbell River and director on the Strathcona Regional District. And John Jack, good to see you.
Hi, I'm Claire Moblove. I'm a councillor with Campbell River and a director at the regional district. I'm a vice chair of the Strathcona Regional District Board.
Carry on, Campbell River.
Good morning. I'm Ron Kerr, Campbell River City councillor and director on the Strathcona Regional District Board. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Colleen Evans. I'm a councillor with the city of Campbell River and a director on the Strathcona Regional Board. Good morning, everyone. Looking forward to this morning session.
And good morning, everyone. I'm Charlie Cornfield. I'm a councillor with the city of Campbell River on the SRD Board. I chair the First Nations Relations Committee. And I also chair the Regional Hospital District Board that we sit on and say welcome. Sam, it's good to see you again.
Village Tassus.
Yeah, hello there. Martin Davis, Mayor Tassus. I'm also vice chair on the Regional District's First Nations Relations Committee, speaking from within Moachat, Moachalat Territory. Welcome.
And Sayward.
I'm Mark Baker, the mayor of Sayward, newly elected and also a new director on the SRD. Morning.
Um, Sabalis.
Good morning, all. I'm coming to you from Sabalis and the Endsoo First Nations on the Atitikit Territory. It just fills my heart to see so many familiar faces from Kayuka this morning. And so happy to see more that I will meet in the future after this is over. I'm just really happy to be here and start this process in such a, such a fantastic way and just really looking forward to being so productive today and learning as much as I can. So, hi, everyone.
Area A.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Gerald Wally. I'm the electoral area director for Kayuka, Nukka, Sayward, which is Area A.
Area B.
Good morning and welcome. My name is Nova Anderson. I live on what we call Cortez Island in the traditional territory of the Tokamot people, the Klahus in the very northern stretches of Kusailish Territory. And I'm the representative from this fair island to the regional district board. Welcome.
And Area D.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Brenda Lee. I'm the director for Area D, which is Oyster Bay Battle Lake, traditional territory of the Comox First Nation. And, um, and we also have a new reserve, Chloe Seas, in my area. I am very active in local government, have been hospital board chair and in local government for 28 years. Currently chair of the Vancouver Island Regional Hospital Board.
I'm Director Abram.
Yes, good morning. I am the director for Area C, which is the Discovery Islands and the mainland inlets. And I'm also the chair of the Electoral Area Services Committee. And I welcome all of you to this momentous occasion where we're finally getting together and welcome to all of you.
Okay, then I'll go to staff.
Hello, welcome. I'm Dave Leach. I am the Chief Administrative Officer of the Strathcona Regional District.
Mr. Yates.
Good morning, everyone. Tom Yates, corporate officer, director of corporate services for the regional district and be part of this event and hope, uh, hope everyone feels welcome and comfortable in this, this remote environment. We'll do our best to make sure everyone's voices gets heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that probably does it.
Okay, thank you. And we'll turn it back over to you, John.
Great, thanks. Perhaps we'll have the project, excuse me, support team to introduce themselves. And I can't tell who's online. I know Hannah's here. So maybe I'll, I'll have Hannah start from the Ministry of Indigenous Relations and Reconciliation.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Hannah Virtue. My name, I'm getting a bit of feedback, sorry. My name is Hannah Virtue. I'm calling in today from the Territory of the La Quangan-speaking peoples of the Songhe's and Asquamot First Nations in Victoria. I work at the Ministry of Indigenous Relations and Reconciliation as a treaty relations and implementation manager. I'm very happy to be here today and happy to see, see some, some familiar faces as well. I'm looking forward to, to this session today. Thanks so much. Uh, John, I, I think I can kind of see we have, who else do we have? We have Brent Mueller, I believe, and Diana Porter. Maybe we could pass it over to them next to introduce from the province.
Hi, everybody. My name's Brent Mueller. I'm a director at the Ministry of Municipal Affairs. I work on local and First Nation relations and part of the project team from the beginning. It's quite an honor to be part of this historic, historic event and with this esteemed group of people. I'm speaking today from the traditional territories of the Quangan-speaking peoples. And we're here to help answer questions, support the process. And if we can't answer a question today, we'll endeavor to get back to you. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Diana Porter. I'm a senior program analyst with the Municipal Affairs and I'm also very grateful to be here today, joining from the La Quangan Territory and look forward to session today. Thank you, everyone. Maybe, I think Tamoko is here as well from MRR. Yes, thanks, Diana. Thank you, everyone. I, my name is Tamoko. I am working at Municipal Affairs, but I'm joining Hannah's team as of X Monday. So I'm here to learn and listen. Thank you very much.
I think that's everyone from the province at the moment, unless I've missed anybody.
Great, maybe we'll have, oh, sorry.
Sorry, John. I just wanted to add that Marekka Edmondson sends her regrets for this morning. She would like to be here but has a conflict and she's hoping to join a little bit later today. Thank you.
Great. And then I, I think we have Hudson online here.
Yeah. Hi, everybody. My name is Hudson McClellan. I'm a planner with EcoPlan. I'm calling in from the unceded, traditional and ancestral territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Sliwatu people. I'm supporting the work on this project and I'm really happy to do so and happy to be here today.
Thanks. And is Catherine on?
I think so.
There, Catherine? Maybe while we wait for Catherine, I'll introduce myself. I'm John Ingram and I am part of the EcoPlan team that has been working on this exciting project for the past few months. And we have the honor of working on an earlier project supporting nations joining the ACRD several years ago. And I, like Hudson, I'm boning or calling in from the unceded ancestral territories of the Musqueam, Squamish and Sliwatu. And if Catherine's not there, perhaps we'll get things moving along.
Um, she is there. She just muted, I guess.
Um, so Catherine Levitt has been, is also on the EcoPlan project team. And at some point, when she gets unmuted, can introduce herself. And she has been supporting this project with Hudson since September. So over the next little bit, I just wanted to give a bit of a project overview and some of this will cover some of the ground that we talked about when we last met on October the 8th. And following that, we will have a short, we'll be joined by Chair Jack, John Jack, from the Alberta Claquitt Regional District, who will be joining us at around 11 o'clock. So we are here helping KCFM's entry into the Strathcona Regional District as a, as a member of government. And they are finding themselves at the table. They are one of the five First Nations of the Manelth Treaty. So that's Huayt First Nations, Yuthulahaf Government, Toqot Nation, Yuchakluset Tribe and Kayuka Checklet's at First Nations. The first four are located in the, their territories are located in the Alberta Claquitt Regional District and Kayuka Checklet's at here in the SRD. So the Manelth Treaty came into effect, excuse me, April 1st, 2011. So it will actually be the 10th anniversary of the effective date on the day that Kayuka Checklet's at First Nations joins the SRD. So it will be a double celebration. And the treaty requires nations to become members in their respective regional districts and requires their participation in two regional district services. So Regional Hospital District, which Director Lee is the, the chair of that board and General Government Services.
Correct. And that's, that's Charlie Cornfield that's the chair now. I used to be the chair.
Oh, sorry, I misunderstood you. Okay.
Director Wally is the chair of the Vancouver Island Regional Library.
Thank you. So as this chart illustrates, it has been a, a long road to where we are today. You know, going, stretching back to 1994 and really earlier. And, uh, you know, moving ahead to the, the fall of 2020 when this project started with the SRD and, and KCFM supported by the, by the province. So it was nine years ago roughly that, excuse me, frog in my throat. Huayt First Nations and Yuthulahaf Government joined with the ACRD. They were followed by Yuchakluset Tribe Government in 2014 and Toqot Nation in 2016. And this map just illustrates the treaty lands of these four governments, nations in the Alberta Claquitt Regional District. And on April 1st, 2021, we'll have KCFM First Nations becoming a member of the Strathcona Regional District. And this is a, a map of the district, regional district today with the electoral areas and municipal members. And this map shows the location of Kayuka Checklet's at First Nations up in the, in the north. And the turquoise area shows their treaty lands. And they will, those treaty lands are within electoral area A. So as mentioned already, this project builds on a lot of previous work that was carried out to support Huayt, Yuthulahaf, Toqot and Yuchakluset Tribe in joining the Alberta Regional District as member governments. And this project has involved over 12 working group meetings with the province. So that's the Ministry of Indigenous Relations and Reconciliation and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs, the Strathcona Regional District and of course KCFM. And since 20, since September 2020, it has included support from ourselves. As mentioned, we had the opportunity and the honor to support the, the work that was done in 2012 with Huayt and Yuthulahaf joining the ACRD. So this shows a bit of a, a timeline of where we are. So we did, there were early meetings in the, in the, in the fall in 2020, which I don't know about all of you, but time has certainly been moving in strange ways this year. It seems like a long time ago, yet it wasn't that long ago. During that time, we had a meeting on October 8th and there was a initial fact package, Tashi, which means a path forward or a path. And that was circulated to the board and staff and also shared amongst KCFM government and staff. And those working sessions continued through November and have continued up until and will continue after this meeting as well. And we are here at our second regional governance meeting. We have produced another document, which is an orientation guide, which I believe was circulated to the board, which is basically takes a fact sheet and provides more detail in a number of different areas, including more detail on the newest member, KCFM. And then moving forward into the spring, it will become official on April 1st, 2021, when KCFM will formally join the SRD with Kevin Jules, Director Jules, becoming the, the director for KCFM. And they will participate in two service areas and will continue exploring joining additional services, but also potentially developing new service areas to help benefit the larger Kayuka region and Malters Island. the larger Kayuket region in Walters Island. And we'll talk about those a little bit more as we as we advance through this. So KCFN, or sorry, SRD provides approximately 30 types of services, local and regional. And so there's over 70 services that are provided by the regional district and they're provided on a cost recovery basis. As mentioned, the Menelth Treaty requires KCFN to participate in two of these areas. So that's General Government and Regional Hospital District. And participation in other services is voluntary. And while we don't expect any addition, you know, participation in 2021, as everyone gets, you know, feels things out and finds their their feet a little bit. But KCFN and SRD are going to continue exploring, you know, both joining existing service areas and potential new service areas that, as I'd mentioned, could benefit the larger the larger area. So General Government Services, it includes administrative costs of running the regional district government. Specific costs include directors, identities, administrative salaries, office building costs, audit, insurance, and legal fees. And all municipalities and electoral areas participate and KCFN will also participate in the service area as of April 1st, 2021. And then we have Regional Hospital District. And the purpose of this, the Regional Hospital District is to raise funds for capital expenses and for new hospital facilities within the region. And it's a joint service with the Comox Regional District. And they do sit as a separate board, but it is administered through SRD and the Comox Valley Regional District. And similar to government services, all municipalities and electoral areas participate. And as of April 1st, 2021, so will KCFN. I'm going to talk briefly. I'd mentioned these two products that were produced and hopefully you've received copies of them. An earlier fact guide, which was distributed at our first meeting back in back in October. And the more recent and expanded orientation guide. And Tashi is a word that means a path or forest path, a path forward. And the orientation guide, which kind of effectively replaces the fact package. It provides the story of Kayuket Checkwesit First Nations. And we're going to dig more into that in with a presentation from Kevin Jewels, Director Jewels. And it provides details on the Menelth Treaty, timelines, governance, details on KCFN, governance and legislature, committee and appointments, the appointees to the board, some of the legislation, relevant legislation, businesses, joint ventures that they operate. And again, we'll be learning a little bit more about more about some of these things shortly. And of course, it also provides details on the Strathcona Regional District. So the organizational structure and the board of directors, committees and appointments, advisory planning commissions, how services are created and apportioned, paid for, protocols and procedures for joining and the like. It's quite a detailed document. There's a lot of information in there. And then there's additional, it provides links to additional information that is available and provided by the government, by the province through municipal affairs, lots of information and other fact packages and information products on regional regional governance. Now, I know we're a little bit early and I'm not sure if John Jack is on the call yet. I can't actually see. Is anyone able to tell me if we have John Jack on the call?
I don't believe he's there yet.
Yep. Because we're well ahead of schedule. So he will be joining us in about a half hour's time. So we're going to come back to this portion. But what I'm going to do is I'm going to stop sharing and I'm going to pass it over to Kevin Jewels from KCFN, who's going to walk us through the next section, which is really more of an introduction to SRD's newest member, Kayuket Checkwesit First First Nations.
Thank you, John. How do I, do I just click on the share my screen? Or I'm not too sure how to how this works.
There is a little icon that says open share tray that's in the middle with a little arrow that points up into a window. So if you click that and then open your presentation, that should get you there.
Is that it?
Yep. And then you can put it into presenter view or slideshow view and.
Okay. Yeah, this is all, it's new to me. I'm not sure how to do.
If you click, you see we're right there. Yeah, slideshow and then.
Beauty. All righty, so everyone can see, okay?
Yep. I think you might have to hit the slideshow button again, just so it pops up and it'll take over your screen.
Is this okay?
I think so. You see, there's a little, I think you need to press that slide.
I'm in full screen right now. Am I in the wrong thing, maybe?
Well, I think this works as is, but try pressing that. So on the bottom.
Yep.
And yeah, slide it one a little more over to the to the right, next one over, and then click that.
Yeah, that is the one I was on.
Oh, okay.
Is that it right here?
I can still see the other slides, but I think it works. It works fine.
Okay, it's showing the full screen on mine.
Okay.
You might have to share. If you go back into the open share tray, you could probably click on the screen where it is, where you see the presentation in Microsoft Teams.
Do I have to stop sharing?
Isn't this new digital era fun?
Oh, it's blast.
All learning.
Is it still just showing the the slides as well?
Yeah, but I think I think this works just fine. We just see the other slides on the left hand side, but I think that's okay.
Okay. All righty. Thank you, everyone. I'm Kevin Jewels, Kayuket Checkwesit Vice Chief. And soon to be a member of the Strathcona Regional District. As you'll see here in our first slide is the is the map of the Strathcona Regional District. And it's as well as showing Electoral A with just the Kayuket Nukasawar area. And it you'll see the the turquoise there, which is showing our treaty settlement land. Here's here's another view of Hoopsitas. And you'll see the purple here, which is showing our treaty lands as well as the turquoise showing our treaty area. And then in the bottom left corner, you'll see, you'll kind of get a picture of how just how close Hoopsitas and and Walters Cove is. They're they're right, right in front of each other. Actually, used to, I used to swim this distance as a teenager. We'd always go swim across the bay and enjoy jumping off the government dock. This is our Kayuket Checkwesit, pronounced Kayuket Checkwesit. Sorry, my my speech is a bit off at the moment. Our territory stretches from Port Creek to north of Nukasound to Solander Island at the tip of the Brooks Peninsula.
I think you might need to advance the the slides.
Advance them?
To slide along. If you want, you know, what I can also do is I can open it up on my end and you can just tell me to.
Okay, that would work.
Next slide. Let's try that. Can everyone see this screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. There we go.
Thank you very much. Our, the way you pronounce Kayuk is Kayuk and Checkwesit. Our territories stretches from Port Creek up to north, north of Nukasound to Solander Island at the tip of Brooks Peninsula. If we could move to the next slide, please. Our overview, Kayuket Checkwesit First Nations amalgamated in the early 1950s. Kayuket Checkwesit on on Actis Island as well as Checkwesit on Camille's Island. It was, it was after after leaders of Checkwesit had a meeting with our leaders of Kayuket and they came together with a solution on Checkwesit's living conditions up up west. And they came to a solution together, which then Checkwesit moved to Camille's Island, located right in front of Actis. And they did this due to weather conditions as well as being closer to the schools and to the store. And due to sewage, water and health and health concerns as lack of infrastructure. And they had no, no choice but to move to, move to Hoopsitas for better, better living conditions within the mid, the mid 60s to the 70s. Canada government relocated remaining survivors of epidemic residential schools and assimilationist policies. Both nations moved to Hoopsitas, where which is our current community of about 600. We have about 600 plus citizens living both in Hoopsitas and elsewhere, spread across, spread across Vancouver Island and spread across Canada and well into the into the United States as well. And we are one of the northernmost of the 14 of the 14 new Channel First Nations as well. If we could go to the next slide, please.
Are you able to see this?
Yeah.
Yep.
Do you want me to go to the next one?
One second. Or yes, yes, please. This is actually, this is showing where Actis is and where Camille's Island is, where Kayuket and Checkwesit. Where and it's showing Hoopsit, where we reside now, which is Hoopsitas. And yes, next slide, please. And here's a video showing the actual the distance from Campbell River all the way to all the way to Hoopsitas.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead, Andy.
Just with the relocation to Hoopsitas, is there any residents still residing in the original settlement area?
In the like, is there anyone still living on Actis? No, there is not anyone, anyone living on Actis anymore. Thank you. There, there, there are some old, old houses there. Like I grew up on Actis. When I was a kid, I lived there for a short amount of time. It was during the summer. We we go back to Actis and stay in our house, which is called the Pink House. It was a very, very bright, kind of pastelly pink house.
Thank you for the clarification. So it's more just an area for summer or seasonal vacation and retreat?
Actis Island?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's, no, it did not, there's no, there's no more housing on there.
Okay.
Want me to go to the next slide? Or do you want to speak to anything on this one, Kevin?
No, no, you can go to the next slide.
Okay.
And you'll see that these are our surrounding islands with the residents on them. Just Okimi Island right here is where is where our nurse's outpost is located. There's there, it's showing another visual of just how how close Hoopsitas is to Walters Island as well. And it kind of gives you a better view of of what it actually looks like. And if if you look closely at Hoopsitas here, you'll see that there's a, there's a hill going up. And this is our, this is our school here from grade one to 12, Kayuket Elementary Secondary School. And then if you go up a little more, you'll see our big house and our and our carving sheds spot that's kind of an area for it. And then if you go up a little more, you'll see our, you'll see our KCFN aggregate, our, our gravel production site, which is located right in here.
And just a question. So that school, it's both, it's a school, it's part of the regular school district. So it's KCFN kids and children and youth from Walters Island and the other islands, right?
Yes, that is correct. Thank you. Yes, this KCFN overview, we're part of, as of April 1st, 2011, we joined the, we joined the Menelth Treaty. And we're, we are one of the five nations, as John alluded to in the beginning of the and we have a, have a little, a little, little thing here. I wanted to read out about George Watts and and about the treaty. So why we, why did we join into the, why did KCFN join into the treaty is George Watts said, will it be treaty or 100% of nothing? Going into treaty was the struggle with the whole, with the whole question of land and sea and who controlled it? How did we lose it? The Indian Act and traditional practices and ways of life were usurped by the Indian Act. We came together from the perspective, we own it all, but but the queen, the crown, will look after us. However, members were were tired of being forced into residential schools and the queen's broken promises and the Indian Indian Act suppression, the cultural genocide, so to speak. And so in late 18 or 1989 to early 90s, members spoke in favor of having control and destiny and authority over the land and sea question with lawmaking authority. It was a glimmer of hope, their inner strength, that it was their hope, big houses. Big houses were burned down, which ultimately came down to George Watts's question, will it be treaty or 100% of nothing? Like, and they and they chose treaty specific to the land and sea question. And we entered into self treaty to, for our people to have a voice. And we need to be the ones to address the situations that come up and and come up with the solutions that's best suited for our people's needs as well. We can go to the next slide. And this is just showing the self governance versus the Indian Act and it's showing what was held under the Indian Act compared to what's held under the treaty from land ownership, which was Crown. Now it's KCFN own land. And 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 then you'll see so forth that from land management, we had none to now we do have land management from law, no lawmaking to now we can create our own laws. So the treaty has definitely come, come a long way for us and our nation, as you, as you can so see from the slide. KCFN, it's a traditional governance, governance based on our Hutwith and Hutwith, which means our way of life, which includes our, our hereditary leadership.
Dr. Cornfield, did you have a question right now?
Yes, I did, Chair. It was about the previous slide in terms of what was transferred over my, and I thought I heard Kevin mention something, but I didn't see it there. And that was. And that was, um, uh, the ocean. My unders, uh, my recollection of treaties is there was provisions for zoning, uh, in specified areas of the marine environment, not just the, uh, sub, what did they say submerged? Not just the submerged land, but rather what happens in the ocean environment. Am I correct, Kevin, or was the, um, was it just the land below the high tide in those areas?
That I am not, I am not too sure about, and I would have to come back.
Okay.
I would have to come back to you for that answer. Sorry.
Alrighty, no problem.
Thank you.
Hey Kevin, it's Jeff.
Yes, thank you, Jeff.
I, I'm happy to answer if you'd like.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, the treaty does provide, uh, with KCFN with the authority for, uh, some lawmaking authorities equivalent to local government lawmaking authorities in the four shore areas, uh, that front treaty lands. So Director Cornfield, your, um, assessment is, is pretty, pretty spot on there.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarity.
Yes, yes, thank you for that, Jeff. And now, uh, we'll move on to our KCFN government highlights, which are elective legislative council that holds Hutwith members as well. And, and then you'll see the Hutwith Advisory Council, which also provides government with advice to take care of protocol during these, during these, uh, cultural events. And this, this slide, uh, is our, our government highlights, which shows our, you'll see that, uh, a chart showing how the government operates from Hutwith. You can see, uh, can give recommendations to both our legislative as well as our executive and our, and our people's assembly can, uh, people can, our people have a chance to share some insight and produce some items that they would like to, to have action and input in. And, uh, as well as our standing committees, um, make, make recommendations and also report to the executive. And then it branches off to our CAO and, and, and our directors listed at the bottom. Thank you. Kayuket Checklissit is approximately 600, uh, plus citizens with 150 living in Hoopsitas or Kayuket, as you can see in the picture here. And, uh, this also gives you another, kind of another view of, of the, the hill we walk up with. And this is a picture of our, our school. Uh, KESS, and then you'll see the, you'll see down here is, is our village and our dock. And then across the bay area here is Walters Island. Um, we have, uh, about 110 citizens live, live in Campbell River as well as the rest live throughout BC and Washington State. And we have 44 single family and duplex houses at Hoopsitas in Kayuket. And, uh, new housing and repairs are underway. Slide, slide 38, you'll see our, uh, some of our highlights, which is the community center and administration building as well as two healthcare clinics. One on Hoopsitas and, and the other one is located on Okimi Island. And, uh, the healthcare clinic, uh, they're, they're in Hoopsitas from Monday to Thursday and on Okimi Island on Fridays and, and the weekend. School, there's, we have kindergarten to grade 12. We have, uh, kindergarten head, head start, uh, and kindergarten down, down, uh, in our village as well as, uh, grade one to grade 12 up at the school, KESS. And then we have our dock as well as Kayuket Powered Limited Hydroelectric Power for the community and KCFN real estate offices and program space in Campbell River here. And, uh, boat and access plane only to Kayuket. The, there, there's, you have to take about an hour and a half on the highway, then about another hour and a half on the gravel road, depending on the season. Cause winter can get, it can get pretty, pretty, uh, crazy with all the, the snow and the ice and just, just the extreme weather conditions. As well as, uh, a 30 minute boat ride from, from, from Fair Harbor to Kayuket, which, which, uh, also depends on the weather and, and can be, and can be pretty extreme at times as well. And mail is, mail is flown in from Gold River on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, weather permitting. And we have a U-truck which brings freight on Thursdays, also weather permitting. And, um, the U-truck has actually helped us out within our community and are being able to have, have our few distribution during these, these times of COVID and our, our nation being on lockdown. Uh, they bring in, they bring in an order that is picked up by our team of people who work for our nation and the food is then distributed to our community members. Uh, next slide, please. Yes, our local economy, uh, economy, a west coast regional economy, similar to other communities in the region from commercial fisheries and aquaculture, uh, tourism, forestry, uh, KCFN owned and operated businesses and KCFN citizen owned businesses, artisans, water taxis, general store, uh, fishing charters, bed and breakfast, silver culture. And this is our, uh, our KCFN Holdys Limited Partnership and showing our, our capital assets. Showing our KCFN Capital Assets Limited Fisheries Enterprises Limited Partnership as well as KCFN Forestry, uh, Limited Partnership, KCFN Marina and Campground Limited Partnership, New Channel Seafood Limited Partnership, one sixth share and Ace and New Channel Canary Limited Partnership, which is one fifth share and the Kwayatzik, uh, Outfitters. Our businesses, we have, uh, the KCFN Marina and Campground Limited Partnership, which is, uh, located in Fair Harbor as well as the KCFN Forestry Ventures Limited Partnership, the KCFN Fisheries Enterprises Limited Partnership, KCFN Aggregate, uh, the gravel production, KCFN Capital Assets Limited Partnership, a majority owner of Kwayatzik Outfitters, uh, a guide outfitters and one fifth owner of New Channel Seafoods and part owner of St. Jeans. And our wat, water and, oh, sorry, I skipped ahead. Our KCFN major product, projects, uh, we're working on is with water and sewer replacement as well as power line upgrades, electrical upgrades, generator repairs, water system upgrades, road improvements, community housing, community docks, community center, community garden, big house slash carving shed, the, the barge landing, tsunami warning system, the community cemetery, clinic repairs and kindergarten repairs. As you can see, there are quite a few projects, uh, going on at the moment. Thank you. The water and sewer replacement, part of the larger Hoopsitas Village Infrastructure Renewal Project. Following COVID nine delays, design engineers visited Hoopsitas and primarily design and initial plans are now complete. Gravel production for the project is nearly complete and drilling and blasting for new water reservoir site nearly complete as well as roads will be improved with the replacement of the water and sewer, uh, distribution system. We have, uh, power line update, upgrades through 2020 crews have been repairing and upgrading the power lines, poles and transformers in Hoopsitas. And, uh, will work, work will eliminate overloaded transformers, increase public safety and increase the reliability of the community backup generator. The, the generator is, is very, very helpful in times of our winter seasons when we are constantly dealing with power outage. So, um, yeah, that was, that's just a little highlight of our generator. Thank you. Uh, next, yeah, thanks. Electricians, uh, working in homes and government buildings to address pre-existing life safety issues. Majority of the most serious items have now been addressed and the electricians are now beginning to work on making the electric, electrical wiring in Hoopsitas buildings, uh, code complaint, compliant. Our water system upgrades throughout 2019 and 2020, working on our community water supply system to improve the reliability and safety. In September 2020, well supply pumps and casings replaced and water treatment system setup finished. And our community housing, all, all government and residential buildings in Hoopsitas inspected, highlighting much needed repair needs. Repairs to date have focused on life safety issues, primarily critical electrical issues. Negotiations underway with the federal government for housing and infrastructure funding, which we expect to be approved later in the new year. Focus on repairs will shift the plumbing, roof repairs and chimney leak structure, rock gutters, uh, perimeter damage, heating or, and more. And cost of repairs is estimated up to $4.5 million. Thank you. Uh, community center, uh, September 2020, uh, initial design work for the future replacement of the community center began. And current plan is to replace the building in the, in roughly the same location with the foundation above building code design flood levels. Design work for establishing flood levels is underway and land clearing work has started. Our big house and, and our carving shed area, as I alluded to in our picture, um, there's various locations currently being considered for the big house. And with, with so many culturally modified trees, KCFN, KCFN government first needs to create a CMT policy. And planning for the carving shed is currently underway as well. Uh, our big house project, which, uh, is a place to bring the community together, share our culture and history with our youth of tomorrow and separate multi-use building and a separate multi-use building for events such as potlatches and feasts. Uh, site selection, design and construction are all started.
Great thing. We, did you want to show, well, two things, we do have that video that we can share that I think Hudson has and can try the screen share on. But I also wanted to check, cause I can't tell if John Jack has joined us. So I just wanted to check, cause it is 11.
I am here, yes.
You are here.
John Jack is joining.
Thank you, John Jack. Uh, do we want to, maybe we'll come back to the video and just, um, maybe I'll have Dave, uh, David introduce, um, John Jack and, um, we can have a, a little quick check in with him on, uh, Huiat's experiences, well, and other Monoth Nations experiences with, uh, joining, joining ACRD and, you know, uh, Director Jack and Chair, Chair Jack bringing unique experiences, Chair of the ACRD as well. But I'll pass it over maybe to David or Tom to, for a formal introduction, if that works. I'm gonna stop sharing my screen.
Okay, well, I, I'm not sure, um, John Jack needs any more introduction here, but, um, as I think he did an excellent job. But, um, uh, I'll pass it over to John, uh, or you introduce yourself to the group.
Okay, great. Hi everyone. So my name is John Jack. I am a member of council with the Huiat First Nation. I've been a member of council since before treaty, uh, 2009. The Monoth Treaty became effective in 2011 and five First Nations have a, an agreement. And so that's something that we all should know at this, this stage here. That agreement has provided a degree of self-government and ownership and control of land resources and a community within our, our various territories. And part of that treaty has mandated the joining of the regional district by First Nations. So four of the First Nations fall within the Alberni Klaikurt Regional District. And the, the final one, the Kayuket Checklissit, they reside in the, uh, in the Strathcona Regional District. So that's the conversation we're having here now. Incidentally, we have joined, uh, Huiat joined the regional district, the Alberni Klaikurt Regional District about a year after the effective date of the treaty. And that process of joining the regional district is what I'm primarily going to be talking about here, as well as some considerations moving ahead. And, um, in that time, I sat as an observer up until the point that we joined officially. Then I was a member up until about late 2016, where I was actually appointed by the board to be the chair. And I've been the chair of the regional district since that time. And so I'll go right into an overview of, uh, Huiat's experience in joining the regional district. And then the experience of other Monoth First Nations joining the regional district and the impact that it's had on our First Nations, but also on the regional district itself. So initially going back to the negotiation of, of, uh, these treaties, one thing that was a sticking point or had been a sticking point and it's since changed was that regional districts and municipalities weren't really included in the, um, negotiation of these treaties and the way upon which, uh, First Nations would interact with municipalities, with regional districts, local government in general. Although one can safely say that there was very little formal relationship between First Nations and local governments. And so lacking that relationship, there's always been a bit of a transparent wall between territories and between activities undertaken by First Nations on their lands, but also outside of them. And the activities of local governments, the decisions they make and the plans they make. Because there is no formalized relationship between those two things and because of the way that the law works, any interactions between First Nations and, um, and, and senior, and governments in general, not just senior governments, fall under the purview of the Crown governments. So even if there is some activity being undertaken by local government, uh, First Nations don't talk to those local governments about those issues. They talk directly to the province and often local governments are left out of the conversation. That was seen as a weakness in the relationship building between, uh, various peoples in British Columbia. And as a result, it was stated that maybe First Nations need to be involved more directly in local government. And while First Nations have, um, powers and abilities above and beyond that of a local government like a municipality or a regional district, they include those powers. And they often have very many responsibilities that are more like a province when it comes to the types of things that have to do with, uh, education, health and so on and so forth. That being said, there are still activities and initiatives that First Nations should be a part of when it comes to, uh, the, the business of local government and being involved at the table was seen as a benefit, especially by my First Nation. Because we have seen in self-government that, that connections and new relationships with opportunities created by those relationships are often one of the best routes to finding opportunities in creating value economically, but also smoothing out and normalizing good relationships between local governments and local leaders and First Nations. Part of the way that we did that was, um, the way Huiat always tends to do everything is to send a message early and loud and say, we're going to join the regional district. When can we join? And we immediately got a follow-up from the province and from the regional district at the time in 2012 saying, whoa, hold on for a second, this is something that, that's never been done before. What can we do to, uh, enable a good transition or good integration of, of your nation into the regional district? And this is where the, uh, a level of understanding and patience on both sides of, of the, the coin, so to speak, was to the benefit of everyone involved. So we've had a meeting with the Chair of the Regional District and the, um, and the CAO of the Regional District at the time. Myself, our CAO equivalent and our Chief Counselor. And all the cards were kind of put on the table in a very polite way. And it was stated that what we And it was stated that what we need to know is how this is going to happen in a way that doesn't scare everyone. We are happy that you're here, but we have no idea how to do it. And it begs a lot of questions that need answering that could open up old wounds between members of the regional district, especially when it comes to apportionment and requisition of taxes. And so after that discussion, it was agreed that our first nation would embark on a, on a joint set of studying and work, uh, with the regional district and with a contractor on finding the best plan for integrating together. So that plan, in addition to the follow-up plan that the province agreed to pay for afterwards, are available on the ACRD website, um, through the reconciliation tab. It's the kind of the, the roadmap to integration of regional districts of first nations with regional districts. And primarily it's, it's a lot of understanding of what the treaty means and the powers involved in a first nation and what that means in terms of how they operate, how they make decisions. And where they're transitioning from levels of capacity into greater capacity. That being said, there's a lot of work that are, that is being undertaken by first nations. That local governments don't need to worry about or already have kind of taken care of in, in the past. And so that understanding of capacity building and, and, uh, ensuring that that can be built up over time is central in the expectations of regional districts and for first nations themselves. The same thing holds true on the other side. Uh, regional districts are largely, and the operation of local government is largely an unknown to first nations because of the way that governance is undertaken on reserve. A lot of the understanding of how that works is not, uh, is not present within first nations because things are done so differently. And so a period of integration of, of observation and understanding between not just the, the political leaders, but the administrative leaders as well is key in trying to build and, or not just trying, but building and understanding between how things are done from a local government perspective and how they are and might be done in the future within first nations. And contributing to the overall governance is a part of that. But understanding how the systems work is also an important part of that. And your administration needs to have a better understanding of how local governments work. Because the way that we have good and well-intentioned discussions about how your uh, activities and initiatives interact with one another depend upon your ability to understand the systems and decision-making, uh, procedures of each side. So that you can realistically have a level of expectation of how long it takes to turn around. Conversations about the use of land with a first nation or, or what have you. And so that's been undertaken relatively smoothly because there's always been, uh, and continues to be a high level of motivation on behalf of both the administration through successive administrator, chief administrators and politically. That, that's something that the directors, the, the present directors of the regional district have demonstrated time and time again is that their willingness to have first nations come on board and have, um, a full voice, a full voting voice and a full understanding of how things are integrated in together. And I think I'll leave off on the two items that have to do with being a part of a regional district. First and foremost, in a lot of folks' mind, especially on the regional district side, is how first nations will participate in a way that, that fits with the overall financial and, uh, budgetary structure of the regional district. And the way that that will work is because of the way that the treaty was negotiated. That allows for things like transaction taxes, real property taxes, and finally income taxes to actually start to be collected within the, uh, communities of the first nations that are part of the treaty. That that means that we have the ability to interface with the budgets and resources of the regional districts in a way that that is fundamentally compatible because all of the same resources are technically there. The challenge, however, is in the first generation or so of being a member of a regional district. Even though we might have the tools for collecting taxes, the, the state of first nations territories and communities is one of underdevelopment where a, where a community that had the same resources available to them in terms of taxation and, and service delivery being resident in the community itself rather than somewhere in Vancouver or Ottawa. These communities would be in a much further ahead place in regards to the infrastructure and, uh, governance and decision-making sophistication and development. But because our first nations have been under the Indian Act for so long, we're lacking that social, physical and administrative infrastructure to really be in the same place that a neighboring community might be in. That is very similar geographically and demographically to, to those communities. So there is a wait time in seeing the requisitions between, say, my nation and the requisitions of our neighboring community of Banfield become more and more similar because the value of the land and the presence of developments on the land forms part of the basis in how a member of the regional district share of the taxes gets calculated. So because the value of our land and because our populations are so low compared to neighboring communities, our share of tax requisition is comparatively low now. But the, uh, understanding of treaties that that will go up over time and will grow faster than the rest of Canada will grow because we have agreements that ostensibly allow for us to make the decisions that we weren't able to make before. And therefore create economic growth that creates development and economic, um, economic development overall in our part of a regional district and in our communities. Huayt is slowly seeing that occur over time. And once people start to move back to our community, things will change as well. Part of how this works is that you want to grow your economies in such a way that people will end up paying more taxes, but they won't mind as much because the increase in value to them is over and above that. So we didn't sweat as, as an entire group too much, the fact that our requisitions proportionate to everyone else are comparatively tiny because we expect them to be as big or even larger than comparable communities within the regional district as we, as we grew economically over time and as population moved back from our territory or from the cities into our territory. Because how tax requisitions are calculated are either by population, by development or some combination therein. Just to simplify it way too much. Now, the other half of the consideration and the changes that have been brought about by men, by first nations being members of a regional district is that you're a full voting member at the board. And that means that you have voting rights over a lot of issues that concern the entire board, but also anything you may purchase into when it comes to, uh, services and programs that you choose to do so. In the experience of the Albany Clycote Regional District, this has changed the voting, uh, numbers in such a way that first nations, um, can affect the outcome of this large decisions, not just the election of chairs, but also the decisions that are made that affect the entirety of the organization. It used to be such that Port Albany, the largest city in the regional district, could carry the day pretty much without having to worry about the concerns of the West Coast or smaller non-Albany Valley, um, members. But the way that the voting works now, uh, the city of Port Albany needs to engage with more than just one or two voting allies. And so that has changed the nature of the conversations in such a way that is more fully, um, involving the entirety of the regional district rather than it being, um, the city of Port Albany show, it is now something that is much more collegial and, and involves everyone at the table. And so that's an artifact of the fact that we have four first nations joining, uh, that table. Whereas in this instance, Cayuket will be consisting of one or two votes depending on where your population is at. That being said, being able to be at the table and receive information, especially information that you are not privy to, if you're not a member of the table, will help you as a first nation, understand the types of things that local government are concerned about and what they're looking at. But also presents you the information and opportunities that membership at the board will grant you through the UBCM, through the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities, through the connections that you will just create by being at the table and interacting with other directors. The things you'll learn about governance, the things you'll learn in passing through the connections that these local leaders have to provincial politicians and federal politicians can matter. So there are political aspects that you can leverage that don't really cost anything. In addition to the actual full vote and access to information that you have as a member of a board. Uh, these are all positive aspects and the only negative aspect in this case is the time involved in a uh, member of your government needs to make the time to interact meaningfully and, and to the fullest degree that they can as a full file in their portfolio, um, to really get the most value out of it. This isn't something that you just show up to a meeting, vote once or twice and then leave. You have to pay attention to what's going on, even if it's going on in a place that's a bit farther away from being your neighbors. Um, the activities of a Campbell River will matter for the entire region. And so being privy to that information and being able to have a conversation with the mayor or a counselor of the larger cities within your regional district will create a greater understanding of what you're working on. But also a greater understanding of the opportunities that may present themselves to work together and create value, either politically, civically, or even economically. And those opportunities for networking also exist as well. I'm going to stop talking now. Hopefully this is something that folks have happened, but I think we should have a bit of Q and A follow-up now. If at all possible, uh, other John. Hopefully that's been helpful, but I want to be able to answer any questions or concerns. Either Cayuket or Checklisit or members of the board may have, or, or staff.
Great. Thank you very much, John. Are there any questions for John Jack? And I see some hands going up, but I, as I've said, I have a hard time navigating, um, on my side with teams. So, uh, Tom Yates, I see you have your hand up, but.
Yes. Thank you, John. Uh, I was just curious, um, what the, what services, uh, the first nations in Alberta Clycote currently take from, uh, from the board table. Uh, is it still just the sort of the general government types of services or is there more now at this point in time? Thank you.
I'm muted. Um, so right now, first nations, uh, that are members of regional districts are mandated to be a part of, I think, three, um, of the general. So general administration, the regional hospital district, and I think emergency planning. And there are others that can be bought into. So I think that some of the first nations on the West Coast have purchased into things like the, um, the idea of a metroplex in the West Coast. Uh, two of the first nations have bought in there. There's participation in parks and trails and some other decision-making that have to do with the West Coast Airport, which I can't remember what it's called. There is general interest in how solid waste is being managed. And there has been some conversations about, um, wastewater, um, conversations, especially in Huayt. We have our own wastewater facility that we're working with the ACRD and the Banfield Marine Science Center on creation of. So that's not necessarily a, uh, working together on a service that's being procured, um, but rather an infrastructure project that will likely be contracted or some kind of contract relationship. My nation has, uh, a series of contract relationships with building inspectors and fire coverage primarily. And we are looking into, um, working together with Banfield on parks and trail development in our area, especially when it comes to our, uh, community forest that tends to be more used for community trails and recreation than forestry. And we're okay with that. We just need to see that that's being done in a good way. There are other things that, um, other first nations within the ACRD participate in. The, the biggest one, I think, right now that we see the most activity in, maybe not the highest amount of money, is, uh, our grants and aid. So the money that is being sent out from the regional district to various, um, civic and social, um, and uh, nonprofit organizations for the activities that they do. First nations are kicking in money and helping to, uh, participate and spend money on the items that make sense to them that help benefit their citizens, but also the community as a whole. The, there can be expansion as things go by. I think as first nations develop and develop their needs, you'll see more and more participation jointly. My first nation's in a tough place because we're kind of removed from the West Coast and removed from the Albany Valley. So most of our conversations end up being creating relationships and, and programs that we share with the community of Banfield. Cause we do kind of see ourselves as the same community, but just like legally separate, but we often act together on those things.
Go ahead, John. I see Director Mogloff has a question.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, John, for the presentation. Um, I had a couple of questions. So it's my recollection going back to when Huayt first joined or there was a lot of discussion or the conundrum seemed to be, one of the biggest conundrums seemed to be is how to deal with the issue of assessed value. How, how do you get to what that assessed value is because there's really been no assessment and because land ownership is so different in a first nation as compared to, um, you know, neighboring communities. So that was one. I want to, if you go into a little bit more detail, how that was sort of sorted out. And then the other question I had, if you don't mind, uh, before I lose my train of thought, is in terms of the weighted vote structure, it's my understanding that it, there's, um, I guess voting units or whatever you want to call it. Each, but can each regional district sort of set their own or is there a, a standard for the province? And so maybe you can speak to both those issues, please?
So as far as I know, the, the way that weighted votes are going are, um, they're set out by provincial law. And so that isn't changed easily. So that, so the, the concepts of budgetary decision-making and weighted votes when it comes to, say, budget decision items, that's still weighted and that's weighted towards population and, and that sort of thing. In regards to the, uh, assessments and the way that that's being dealt with, uh, depending on the first nation. So my first nation doesn't have the concept of private ownership. All land is held collectively by the nation and is, is essentially, um, uh, land interests are divvied up into leaseholds kind of arrangements, slightly different legally, but presents a lot of, uh, worrisome complications for banks and other organizations to really wrap their heads around. The math is not hard though. When we say that there is a lease, um, a leasehold arrangement for 99 years in this piece of, of residential property. And the way that we said it is that they can be renewed, uh, pretty automatically after that 99 years are up. Then that's something that we see as being something that banks and, and organizations should see is, is pretty easy to understand and add value to or assign value to. BC assessment has been able to go through our territory, especially in our residential village and assign assessed values to each of the different, um, uh, parcels of land that have been, um, surveyed and, and put down and understood. So that's where, uh, not just assessments, but building inspection has been important, uh, for when that's called for. But for the most part, the, the math isn't much more difficult. It's just making sure that BC assessment does come in and go through that process. Because income taxes and real property taxes are being, uh, being, uh, brought in to all of the member nations of the Monals Treaty in the next couple of years, I think two and a bit years from now. BC assessment is paying more attention to what's going on. And they have actually, um, done a few test runs with our first nation and we've, we've had them send out sample assessments to each of the parcel holders in our territory to let them know this is what your, your land interest and your house have been assessed at being evaluated at. And as a result, because we're pegged to the district of Yuculit for, um, real estate or real property tax rates, which is a whole nother conversation. We should be able to set our own rates because we're not Yuculit. Then this is what your land tax would be. And then that provides certainty to us as a first nation, understanding we know what we'll be receiving. But also the owners of those land interests will have an understanding of what they'll, oh. Did you have a follow-up at all?
No, I think that does help me. I, I just thought that in term, going back to the weighted vote, I thought that each regional district within parameters can set their own, um, like the voting units. I thought there was a just different, uh, different voting units in different regional districts. But I can deal with that another time. I, I'm curious.
I think that's set out in provincial, either regulation or law. So, uh, don't quote me. I I think that's set out in provincial either regulation or law, so don't quote me because now I'm not sure.
Claire, Tom Yates here. I think I can clarify that. I believe that other than for things like general administration, each regional district can establish a different voting system within each service. But it has to be by bylaw, it has to be a service bylaw, but it's service by service, basically.
But for the big ticket items that have to do with budget, I think it's weighted automatically. Brenda, I think you're the next one.
Thank you. Hi, John. It's Brenda Lee. I remember when you were first elected to Albany, I said you're going to be the next Prime Minister of Canada. And I still believe that you're very, very articulate and knowledgeable. And the question I have about your presentation is, when you joined the services at Albany Clay Quat, do you join on a contract basis or do you join the function and and participate in the in the function as per, you know, cost per thousand and whatnot, as per actual cost of the service?
Yeah. So the the answer is that it can be either, depending on the service and depending on the wishes of the director and the First Nation involved. So Huayt tends to, when I talk to my other councillors, they tend to favor doing things on their own, and therefore we just contract services from the regional district in a lot of ways. Cajoling them into working on a program basis has been a bit of an issue for me. We've got some movement on buying into a, not an entire regional parks and trail operation, but a partnership kind of bipartisan or bilateral relationship with our nearest electoral area. So the the answer is it's it's up to the to the alliance of each of the electoral areas and municipalities and First Nations in the same way that it is for any other director. The funny thing is that we are demographically, geographically, more like an electoral area. But the way that we tend to assign and act is more like a municipality because we have a full council and so on and so forth. Incidentally, our our election cycles are different than the election cycles of the local government. And so I've gone through, I think, three or four elections in my time now, and I'm always I'm off, I'm offbeat. My election cycles are closer to the federal cycles because we're on four year fixed terms. And they're not in November, they're in July or June. And so I often find myself signing a lot of checks in that kind of interregnum period. I think I answered all of your questions. I think the next person I have is either Tom or Andy.
Thanks.
Thanks. Tom, did you have a question or is your hand just up because it was up?
I thought my hand was down. I apologize. No, I don't have another question.
Okay, Mayor Adams.
Thank you, John. Great to great to see you again and and really appreciate you taking the time to share with, share with us your experiences. And you've just sort of alluded to some of the complexities with dealing with services and those types of things. But from what I've seen with our time together on the Island Coast Economic Trust is there have been certainly some beneficial opportunities for grants and projects moving forward in a collaborative fashion. And I'm just wondering if you could just share what some of the benefits you have experienced that the Kayooka Checklet's that maybe look forward to as we move through this process?
So our membership of the regional district is actually what kicked off a lot of our major economic initiatives. And that was as a direct result of the connections that we made. So the introductions that were made through through members of the regional district, either the staff or especially the other directors, is what led directly to conversations that we had with the Port Authority on Port Authority expansion and how that's developed into something that may benefit the entire region and could benefit Huayt directly if we're more involved. Not only that, the connections that we made through the Port Authority and through the regional district led to our introduction to Steelhead LNG. So say what you will about Steelhead, say what you will about big industry. They approached us and started a conversation that ended up providing a lot of economic opportunity for us in a short term perspective with the relationship that we created with Steelhead, but also helped us sharpen our pencils from a large project, a large industrial understanding and an overall economic understanding of how BC and Canada work on the economic stage, the global economic stage. Therefore, the interactions that we had with Steelhead, with the province of British Columbia, working together with Steelhead, with Canada, and with prospective investors in the project, kind of led our understanding to a wider world that made us more capable, just generally because we had to do the work, but also more understanding. So our reach and our grasp were both kind of expanded through the kind of work that we did with those those economic initiatives. So we our profile is much higher with the province. Our profile is much higher with the feds, both the Conservatives and the Royals and the NDP. As a result of the things that we did together in partnership that were ultimately sparked off by the introductions and the connections that were made through local government. And that's one thing that I can't stress enough is that the the forestry conversations that Huayt is having, those are partly in part due to the demonstration of our capacity to do big deals and to act professionally and with high capacity on economic initiatives. We helped build trust in the Huayt brand as an economic actor and as a political actor to provide opportunities that we've brought not just to Huayt, but have ostensibly benefited the entire region. The the same thing can be said for the the more direct and short term and smaller scale opportunities that we explore with local businesses as well. A lot of the opportunities that we create as a First Nation aren't specific just to turning over profit that we put into a bank account somewhere on Young Street in Toronto. A lot of what we make, we either send out in regards to making job or making job opportunities for citizens. And if we make more jobs than we have citizens available, then other people get those jobs. Or we we procure services locally. And that's something that First Nations tend to do, but also local governments are starting to work on through social procurement or strategic procurement initiatives now. And so it's it's kind of working together really well. Hopefully, that answers your question. I mean, there's a lot of specific kind of things where you have to have your staff and politicians all pushing or pulling in the same direction and dragging, in some cases, in the same direction. But there are opportunities out there and the way that First Nations make their economic way in the world is helping to create economic value, to grow the pie, so to speak, and to share in that increase in the pie, rather than constantly fight with other First Nations and other local government for share government handouts. If we're involved in economic development together, we can both benefit from growth. At least that's the underlying understanding.
Yeah. And then, thank you, John. And and that was sort of the part that I was looking for in that we have operated far too long in isolation. And by collaborating and looking at the at the whole and the greater good is is far more beneficial for everyone throughout our community. So thank you.
Great. I think CC, Charlie Cornfield, please, go ahead.
How are you doing, John? And good to see you again. And even if it's a virtual visit to Campbell River, it's been overdue. I particularly liked when we started, when you started your presentation on in about governing responsibilities being different than regional districts. One of my pet peeves over the year has always been that or over the years that I've been involved is the province recognizes local government as a level of government. That came with a community charter. However, the federal government does not recognize local government as a level of government. So they consequently, they don't consult us. They don't consult us on things that involve the fishery, which, you know, to our community in Campbell River is extremely important or other things. Culture being a controversial one, but there was no consultation or discussion with us as local government. So my question is, is do First Nations and especially treaty nations recognize local government as a level of government? And do they do that in Albany, Clay Quat?
So this is, this is a complicated question. So I'm going to make a differentiation between nations with treaties and nations without. So nations without treaties tend not to view local government as being something that is of much use to them. And the the best example I can give you is something that I have to deal with right now. And so we have a landfill that serves the entire Albany Valley. It happens to be directly adjacent to the Sea Shot Reserve and has been a sore point for the relationship between Port Albany residents and the Albany Valley residents and the Teshot First Nation since it was started in the 1970s. That landfill is getting to a point where we need to either upgrade it or see stark increases in the cost because of the gases that are being emitted from organics that have been put in there over the past 40 years. And so, my apologies, my dogs are going insane. The problem, though, is that local governments have no official place in the Big C legal consultation processes that First Nations undertake. So First Nations have a difficulty with something that a government is doing. Then they don't go to a local government. They may courtesy have a courtesy call, but they only really have incentives to talk to the province. This is part of the reason that local governments weren't involved in treaty negotiation because the relationship between local governments and BC is often like the relationship between First Nations and the federal government, that they're children of the senior government and therefore are being taken care of, right? So there aren't incentives for First Nations outside of treaty to have meaningful conversations with local government, except for fluff pieces and things here and there. There's, they don't have any skin in the game. There's no reason for them to have a conversation and spend what little limited capacity and time they have on having a conversation with a CAO or a director of something, or sorry, a manager or something. Or a chair or a director or a mayor or a councillor when the real conversation will be in the Big C consultations that are undertaken by the province. So there aren't many incentives without an official relationship. And so that official relationship can only really be governed now by treaty because treaties have the effect of of the same power as legislation, in fact, a little more than that because they're protected under the Constitution. The, so that's why we can join a regional district and join meaningfully because we we automatically have a place as a result. That could have been interpreted as an imposition of First Nations into local government by the province. But luckily, in our instance, it hasn't been seen as an imposition, but rather an opportunity. And that's what I'd like to stress. Everyone at this table believe and understand is that you can make this an opportunity that pays off in ways that aren't necessarily expected. But the more and more you have conversations with other leaders around you, you realize that in sectors of the economy, all depend on everyone pulling in the same direction. For example, with forestry. Forestry in BC doesn't compete against itself. It competes against the entire world. Say, in Japan, where there's a market for building material there, our competitors aren't other places in BC or even Washington. Our competitors are in Finland and Russia. And so the small operations that are comparatively small to the rest of the world in BC need to work together to create value, to be competitive in the Japanese market or the Chinese market or whatever. And those kind of things are an example where that kind of understanding and coordination can be enabled by the relationships that you build at local government and build up from there. And the reason why I say that you can do that is because First Nations often have an in with federal politics and federal federal process and procedure, whereas local government tend to have an in with provincial politicians and provincial procedure. And so you can trade politically that influence and work together on things to coordinate on forestry. Or what you said, Charlie, coordinate on fisheries, where there's a lot of people in local government who understand and are worried about what's going on in fisheries, don't have a lot of avenues in to have their words be taken into consideration by the Ministry of or the Minister of Fisheries and Oceans. First Nations, because they can be involved, and if they're in a prominent position, can use some of their federal verve to get in the room with a minister or a deputy minister, an assistant deputy minister, and really start talking about what matters. And if they understand the regional context as well as their own, then you can see people working together that way, too. And that can be a quid pro quo because I have been introduced to ministers provincially through my provincial or through my local government contacts that I would never have had before if I was just sitting out there as a First Nations leader. So you can, you can trade resources. If you think of connections as a resource as well, then you can actually use those to the benefit of all.
Right. Yeah, it's all about relationships, isn't it? And just one little tip. You know, you mentioned the landfill and the gases that are emitted. Look at it as a resource.
Yeah.
That capture the gas and utilize it to generate power or heating or whatever. But so there's an economic opportunity that exists. And yeah, anyway, it's all about real resources. That's really good to see you again. And thanks for your presentation. You clarified some points that I had. And thank you for your explanation on the sort of the recognition role and yeah.
I think most everyone has my contact information, but John or anybody at Eco Plan can distribute my email address. I'm the integration of First Nations into regional districts and having a good transition and understanding between First Nations and their local government neighbors is particularly important to me. So this is, I will always take time, even if it takes me forever to get here, to help out when it comes to that. I think this is an untapped resource and an untapped opportunity for for both local government and First Nations to create opportunities and value all around, not just for themselves and their organizations, but those connections can foster real economic growth as well.
Super. Thanks.
Okay, I think I'm going to disconnect and get back to my council meeting. I will, I'll say hi to Robert and Derek on everyone's behalf. Especially you, Francis. It's good to see you. And Lillian and Samantha, I hope. Oh, and Kevin's technically on. Oh, there we go. Hi, Kevin. Good to see you.
Hoping to say see you to you because it's good, good to hear you, good to see you again and looking forward seeing you again in the future. It's always good to see you, man.
I hate the sing and run, but please follow up and give me a call or email me at any time. And just keep beating on my head if I don't get back to you right away. It's the only way that it works for me. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Brad Underhere, Regional District Chair. I just want to send our thank you to you from our board for your insight, your information as we move forward with the Checklets. Okay, you can check this band. I can't thank you enough for your insight. Enjoy your day.
Thank you and chucha, everyone.
Thank you, John.
So, John, can we have, take a five minute break before we go back to Kevin?
Sure. Well, I'm actually just looking at the clock and it is 10 to 12. So we're actually coming hard to the lunch break.
Okay.
So what I'm going to propose is we have a three minute video because we were just talking about the Big House project and we have a three minute video on the Big House. We would like to share. Hudson's going to do a screen share and hopefully that will work. And then we'll take, after that video, we'll take our planned lunch break and reconvene at one o'clock. And then Kevin's got a few more slides left on his presentation, not very many. And then it's just a handful of slides and a little wrap up to this session. Does that, does that work?
That sounds good.
Great.
Sounds good, John. Thank you.
So I'm going to pass it over to Hudson.
Yep.
To queue up the video.
Okay, great. Just opening my share tray, making sure that the audio is going to be shared with the video. The audio doesn't start for the first, like, 10 seconds. So, but if you don't hear it,
The audio doesn't start for the first like 10 seconds. So, but if you don't hear it in a little bit, just let me know.
I remember one time, loving to school, wanted to come back and cross our car. We've lost that, that place a long time ago. So it's we have to try and get it back.
We're from here. It's in our blood. That's who we are. Never be ashamed of who you are.
The Big House is a huge part of our pride and it brings us back to who we really are as Kaiyuk Tjeklis people.
We have to do this. We gotta do it now. There's no more waiting.
In the next 20, 30 years, our native culture might be gone from that.
People tomorrow will hear the hot way I say, go for it.
This is what we're fighting for, is to bring our culture back.
Without a healthy community, we don't have what it takes to come together. This building will support that through honor and dignity and respect and history and culture.
It's been a dream of our elders since 1930s when they burned down the last ones that we had.
There are little ones. At school is the most important part of our community.
It's, it's for, for you guys, for the youth.
Laco, for your life.
I think these are the house posts.
I think the most important and precious thing would be to have our longhouse back. Our kids would learn to be proud of who they are and what they are and where they come from.
I thought you started, don't stop it. Thought that it's pay failure.
So John, you want to break into your lunch break now?
John, John Ingram.
Sorry, and here I was talking away. What I said right there is thank you, Hudson. It's a very, I find that a very powerful video. And a nice way to end the morning and we're going to, it's five to 12 right now. So we are going to take our lunch break now and come back at, at one o'clock. And Kevin will finish his presentation and then we just have a few more slides to, to wrap up and that'll be, that'll be the day. Does that sound good to everybody?
Very good.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
I'd like to thank Hudson for sharing that video, because that video was very emotional to me. Getting to see, see our elders on there, whoever recently passed is very, it's, it's, it's beyond words. Thank you.
Such a powerful video. Glad we could share it.
Yes, thank you.
Cool. Okay, so we'll see everybody in an hour then?
One o'clock. Sounds great. Thank you, guys. Okay, see you then.
Cool.
Bye.
Take care.
Hi, everyone. Hope you all had nice lunches.
John, did you used to work at the Forest Service in Campbell River?
No, that was my evil twin. Is there, is there another John Ingram that, that you know?
Well, there used to be one that worked for us in Campbell River when I was in fourth grade. I used to deal with him all the time. He doesn't look like you, so I was wondering.
Well, no, it's, you know, my last name isn't super common unless I lived in Halifax for a little while and for some reason Ingram is really common. Back east, well, maritimes, anyway.
Okay. I don't think he's still there. He's moved on, but.
Could be a distant relative.
Yeah, it could be.
Thanks for showing that video before the break. It was during this time of, you know, isolation and COVID-19 restrictions and things like that. I haven't been to Kaiyuk in quite some time and I used to go every week. And so it's great to see some faces that, that I recognize. And what an amazing and beautiful video it was. Well done, whoever produced that. I just hands up.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a great video. I don't know who, who did it. I don't know if you know Jeff. I see you're on.
I think it was made by Media One, but I don't. It was a collaboration, obviously, between KCFN and Media One. But I can't remember when it was done. It was a few years ago.
So back in the days when you didn't have drone shots, you had to get a helicopter in to do that stuff?
Possible.
Yeah, I brought back cluster memories when back on the school board back in, what was it, 2019, 99 to 2004, going in there once a year and then I worked part-time with school board. Now we go in usually every summer and, you know, looking at the boat ride going in and that kind of stuff. Just beautiful area. Just gorgeous.
One of my favorite areas to fish.
Yeah, we just had a new person join our team and she, when she learned about this project, she is a big paddler and she is up there, well, except for this past year, you know, almost, almost every year.
Excellent for kayaking.
Yeah.
An interesting area, especially when you get up towards Battle Bay and that.
Yeah, the furthest north I've paddled on the outer coast is I wasn't, did the Chatlaths one year. But I've been really wanting to go up here. I've never been and would love to.
Oh, it's essential.
Does that mean when you say essential, I can qualify it as essential travel?
You can try.
It'll do you good. It's one of those kayaking as a solitary sport anyway, where at best the one other person in your bubble. You're in the outdoors.
Yeah.
The whole area is just got gorgeous beaches and the sea otters will drive you nuts, but they're really cute.
How are we doing for everybody getting back?
I'm here. It looks like most people are back.
Do we have Kevin back yet?
I guess you're just going to carry on with Kevin's presentation, John?
Yep.
Okay.
So just wait for, I can't, I have a hard time.
I don't see Kevin currently with us. Could mistake him, but he's not on the list of current participants.
Okay, we can give him another, another minute maybe to hop on and. And as backup, I mean, there's Jeff and there's also Cynthia. Maybe I'll use you as my eyes, Tom, and you can just let me know when, when you see Kevin pop up.
Okay, I will let you know as soon as I, as soon as I find out.
And Cynthia, are you, Cynthia back with us?
I'm here, John.
You ready to pinch hit if need be?
I certainly am.
Okay.
Oh, Kevin, Kevin just said he's having trouble getting back in.
Is Kevin calling in from in town or is he out in Kaiyuk?
Kevin just sent a message that he's having trouble getting in.
Tell him to close out and go back to the invitation and log in again.
We can't because he can't get on.
Okay. Can't you send him a text message or something?
I can P M him.
I just dialed them up here on the request to join, so it looks like it's calling him. So we'll see if he answers.
Yeah, I, I had an issue getting back on too. It took about five minutes to load up the second invite.
Okay.
Oh, the joy of technology, especially on the North Island.
Yeah. Well, at least we can see you now, Julie. I mean, your internet connection seems better these days. Well, sort of. You're still a little choppy, but we can tell what you're saying. That's the main thing.
Well, there's only a couple more slides left. Do you want Cynthia? I can advance to the next slide if you're feeling up to it. And then when Kevin manages to get on, we can switch it back. Does that work, Cynthia? Or have we lost Cynthia now?
Silence is agreement.
And Tom, you're able, oh, there you are.
Yeah, sorry. I'm just helping Tony get on to the on here as well. So just, just give me a minute. What were you asking me?
Oh, I was asking if you're ready to, to start up and jump in, but maybe we pass this over to Jeff.
I'll just be one minute.
Okay. So when is Connected Coast gonna start up? It's 2022? They're looking at making landfall?
No, no, we're in Kaiyuk at maybe 2022, but this year we're going to be deploying fiber here this summer.
That's great. That's fast.
Yeah, I think we're 2022 here and Tassus too. We're looking at getting the last mile and everything sorted.
Yeah, that's only next year now, we can say. It seems like it's longer way, but you know, next year, so.
It's election year too, I guess.
There you go.
Uh huh.
It's almost, it's almost like we planned it that way, huh?
Yeah, perfect.
Even better, David. It's only a few months away.
Let's hope it works.
Oh, there's Mr. Negative.
No, I was even positive.
That's positive? Oh, okay. Jeez, I'd hate to hear you're negative. Yeah, no, no, not after that intro. Julie just fell off her chair. If that was your positive, my God.
I thought you were talking about me when you started talking negativity.
Oh, God, no, you're, you're Mr. Up with People compared to that. Holy.
Hopefully the best. It's a hopeful message.
Okay.
Oh, Jim's, oh, shoot. How's that sound?
You sound like Charlie Cornfield.
That was perfect.
I forgot that I'd unplugged my headset when we broke for lunch.
He knows nobody reminded you.
Sorry, did I, oh, oh, that was Brad talking. I thought my plumbing was acting up again. Ar, ar, ar.
There's enough of that coming through your headset, Charlie.
Yeah, I know. It's from outside into the inside.
Okay, John, we better go before he gets scared.
I, I don't know. I'm kind of liking this regional district presentation.
There's Cynthia back.
I know. I'm just wondering, is there a comedy service that KCFN could consider joining to?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need a comedy committee.
We are the comedy committee.
That's right. So I guess what I'll do is I'll go ahead and continue in the absence of Kevin not being able to join in right now. So what was the slide just before this, John?
Oh, it's just an intro slide. It was the Big House.
The Big House.
Maybe, so we've gone through several of these and we're right down near the bottom now, the tsunami warning system.
Okay. Okay, so as you can see, we have quite a few capital projects on the go. Okay, you can check, because it's kind of been one of those communities that we haven't had a lot of funding to do a lot of capital projects, but we've been able to source out some of the funding now with thanks to Infrastructure Canada, being able to put out some additional infrastructure funds. So we're able to get to some of these projects a little bit better now. The last one we have here is the tsunami warning system. It's a new warning system that is very recently installed, so it's fully operational now. It's strategically located up high enough so that the school behind the community as well as the surrounding islands will be able to hear the, the siren so that we can, we have the largest reach from where it's situated. It's a, it was funded by Indigenous Services Canada to get this, this in place. And so we've tested it out a few times. It's quite neat. You can actually speak over it. We really wanted to have a great community party, which we might after COVID. We can actually play music over it. So we're kind of excited about this. It's just massive speakers up on a pole behind our community. Barge landing, this is, this was just really a, a small upgrade to the barge landing that. Barge landing, this is, this was just really a small upgrade to the barge landing that we've had there for probably about 10 years now. We'd like to do a little bit of a bigger barge landing so that we can get larger boats and that can go up, up to the barge landing and drop off material. It's a little tricky right now where it's situated. But this is also one of our locations. If we need to evacuate a patient out through our, we have a medical van, and it had a hard time turning around, so we had to expand this a little bit so that the van can turn around and back down the barge a little bit and somebody can get into a boat easily enough. These are for the ones that need to be taken out, but they're not emergencies so that it doesn't require helicopters, so. Yeah, thanks. Community docks, we have two community docks right now. And one of them, we were, it was handed over to us from the government in their project to hand over docks to local communities because they're too expensive to manage, so we got one of those docks. We also have this, that's a good description. We also have a smaller community dock that is probably is currently at the end of its life. We need to replace. So we're working on getting those two docks. One of them is going to be upgraded and expanded. The other one is going to be replaced, being a boat and plane access only docks and are a huge requirement, lots of boats. It's good for me. And there was a question, I think that was, I saw a hand go up there.
Yeah, Director Wally?
Yeah, if I may, Cynthia, I was just gonna ask you about the siren that you had beforehand for the tsunami warnings. Do you still have that or whatever happened to that?
We still have it.
Because actually it belongs to our department in Campbell River. We just borrowed that thing when we brought it out for the interim, so one day they might want it back, so maybe just hang on to it.
Yeah, we can provide that back to them. That's no problem.
Great, thanks.
So we have cemetery, locally it's on an island called Mission Island. On the maps you'll see it calling, called Camel's Island. And so it's currently, this is a view of it from, from the boat. So you can't really see the cemetery. It's in behind the trees and the brush there, but it is eroding away quite a bit. We're also have run out of space in the section that it's at, so we're requiring not only expanding it, but also doing some erosion protection. A little bit of history on this here, that piece of property where the cemetery is on, on that island used to belong to the Catholic Church. And when we were negotiating treaty, we weren't able to get that particular island or section of the island. We have, we own the rest of the island, but that particular section of the island, we couldn't obtain that in the treaty. The nation had wrote a letter to the Catholic Church requesting the, that piece of property. Nobody ever heard anything back. And then out of the blue, the bishop in Victoria was looking for something, and their papers came across KCFN's letter and got on it right away without contacting us to get that piece of land transferred to the nation. And so that actually happened in 2018. That was transferred back to KCFN legally, so we own that, hold that whole island now. And that's it for that one. So as you can imagine, with all these capital projects, we've experienced quite a number of community challenges. Accessibility has been one of the challenges, but it's also forms one of the beauties of the community because you're required to take on a really nice boat ride and sometimes a really exciting boat ride into the community. Julie probably knows better than anyone else on the board other than Kevin what that looks like. So we're a boat and flying community, and there are great challenges in the winter. This particular winter, we've had several storms. Storms here, they get, the wind gets up to 120 kilometers an hour, so it's you can imagine some of the challenges that takes to get in, in and out of the community and getting supplies in and out of the community and the high transportation costs because of remoteness. And we have emergency response limitations as well, so whenever there's an emergency, a lot of times people have to get flown out of here by helicopter. If it's the middle of the night, it's one of the military helicopters that comes in if it's an emergency that needs to be responded to fairly quickly, that they can't go by road. Infrastructure challenges, internet connectivity. We're pretty excited about Connected Coast being underway, and we've been excited since we've heard about it. We've had a lot of challenges. When we first got internet in the community, I finally just took a sign down, but there used to be, they used to have to turn down, turn off the internet to the entire community in order to do payroll. And so once payroll was done, then they reconnect everybody's internet. So we're not at that stage anymore. We're a little beyond that, but we could still use some better internet. We have some challenges with the current power provider, electricity provider, and KCFN is in the process of looking for solutions. This is one area that maybe we can see some collaboration with the regional districts to look for some solutions for everybody in the Cayuga area. Water and sewer, we have aging of basically infrastructure that is at the end of its life for both our water and our sewer. We've received a grant from Infrastructure Canada, which is actually a collaboration between DC and Canada to replace the water in the sewer. And so that'll be done over the next two years. We're, we're just at the end of the preliminary design, and so we're going to get into detailed design on that fairly quickly. And currently KCFN provides water to most of the surrounding islands, not entirely everybody on the surrounding islands. And that is an agreement between the Cayuga Community Association and Cayuga Checklist at First Nation. And so we, we provided water over there since I think 2007. The solid waste and recycling has always been a challenge in our community. At this point, our solution is going to bring in containers, garbage and recycling containers. And then it, we fill it up over, it usually takes about three months or so to get filled up, and then we arrange for them to get picked up and you ones dropped off, so we get about four times a year, we get those bins coming in. And so it would be nice to have a little bit more of a long-term solution. As you can imagine, transportation cost, barging cost gets quite expensive. The barge owner is usually really good though about coordinating those trips when they're up here for other companies as well, so that we can all share the cost of the barging. So they're usually pretty good and try and make it as cost-effective as they can for us. But we probably pay about $140,000 a year on garbage and recycling. Climate change, we're seeing, of course, like everybody else, sea level rises, extreme weather, impacts on traditional foods. Yeah, we, just like everywhere else, you have pretty limited seafood, it's access to seafood in the community right now, especially shellfish. I think it's one of the biggest areas because of the otters. But we're seeing some of that come back as the otters are moving south more so, and I think they're moving north too, but they tend to move south. The economy, we have, of course, being as remote as we are and where we are in terms of resources and access to resources, it can be really challenging. Transportation costs, seasonal tourism, we found tourism was starting to increase quite a bit pre-COVID. Not sure what that's going to look like post-COVID. But you know, with, we found that people are starting to go into more and more remote locations, which we found could be a benefit for us. And the nation itself owned a lodge, and we're starting to transition away from fishing towards more of an ecotourism type. But we're, we're looking at expanding our businesses that the nation owns to something that's going to do two things. And businesses itself, what a business doesn't necessarily do both things, create employment and create revenue, but that's, those are the two main things that we're looking at. We talked about a lot of the opportunities for collaboration already in previous slides, but we're looking at being able to just improve the overall living in Cayuga. You find that if you're, if you're ever here, especially in the summertime on a nice day, you learn very quickly why people live in Cayuga. It's a beautiful place, and so we try and make it work as best we can. So there might be some ways we can partnership around solid waste, emergency management. And the big one, I think, is that is out of our limited control is the access to power, electricity, which I think we need to work with the Community Association, Regional District on getting a better option for our whole community, because the whole community suffers as a result of the, the current condition of it. And that's it.
Okay, so I've asked you questions, Milo Tivit. Director Cornfield.
Thank you, Chair. I had four small ones. At the start of the presentation, there was mention of your, you have a business or a corporation, the hydroelectric business? Or is the electricity still supplied by the submarine cable from Fair Harbor?
So to answer that, we don't have a business for hydroelectric or any type of power production. It is still supplied by the submarine cable. So the improvements that we were doing on our power lines are the power lines that the nation owns within Hupsetas and the community of Hupsetas. So the power company doesn't own those lines that exist within our community, only the ones coming to, to the community.
Okay, it's been a while since I've been out to Cayuga and yeah, I didn't know if you'd put in a small-scale hydroelectric, like a Pelton wheel or anything else, so. Second question, how are you doing with your tourist facility? Because I remember inspecting it and having a look at it when I was with the Ministry of Tourism a number of years ago. And just wondered, like you had the one building down close to where the boats were moored. Has that all been fixed up and updated and? No?
Unfortunately, no, that, that building is something that we're gonna probably have to take down. It wasn't constructed properly to begin with, so we've had to shut it down unfortunately, and we're looking at having to rebuild maybe in a different location.
Okay. The next one is you mentioned the government dock being transferred over to Cayuga Checklist. Now, is that the government dock that was on Walters Island where the Uchuck used to go in? Oh, just the one at the, at Hupsetas? Did I get it close?
Just the one at Hupsetas. Oh, you did good. It's Hupsetas. Yeah, you just wanted, that's, at Hupsetas is the only one that can transfer to the nation.
Okay, because that was, in my opinion, that was one of the big drawbacks was that lack of good boat access to to your, your village. Garbage, does it still get taken away on the Uchuck or does it move through Fair Harbor?
No, our garbage moves through Fair Harbor. The, the garbage for the boats on Walters Island and the surrounding islands gets taken out on the Uchuck.
Okay, and then does it end up in the landfill at Zabalas? You know?
I don't know. Hours does not end up in Zabalas, no.
Okay. Good, thank you. Good luck, because you're dealing with a very beautiful area that is quite remarkable.
Thank you. And Director, our Chair has had to leave the meeting, so as Vice Chair, I'm going to take over. And I'm not sure which order everyone is in, but I think next up is Director Wally. So Director, go ahead.
Thank you. My question is concerning the breakwater. When you first come in, where DFO put that light in there not so long ago, are you, any plans to beef up the rock on the face of that as it slowly erodes over the winter?
The nation hasn't had any plan, but we're definitely talking with the folks on the surrounding islands because it is an interest. And we could, this is also another area that we could collaborate on getting that, that fixed up as well.
Right, thank you. Yeah, we had looked at it at one time, and it's such an enormous undertaking that it's too big for the regional district to undertake. Area especially, with this tiny little group here. But perhaps between the two of us, we could get some kind of a grant from a higher level government to look at.
Yeah, I agree.
Great. I see Director Davis, you had a question?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. And yeah, my question to Cynthia is regarding tsunami preparation. Like, do you, people have road access that allows you to get to high ground in a short period of time? And I understand part of the community is on Wallace Island.
So our community of Hupsetas has a road to access up to the school, which is higher ground. And that is the site where we, in, in the event of a tsunami, that's where we will go is to, to the to the school. We also have a number of C cans up there with supplies. So if we're having to sustain ourselves up there for a period of time, we've got some supplies there to, for our community members. And we want to thank Regional District because we've been working with Sean Goodman, our Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, has been working very closely with Sean and getting some of those grants that are available and the supplies for those C cans.
Right, thanks. I have another question too. Is, Cayuga interested in a road connection? Because I was looking on Google Earth and I see the roads come quite close that take you out towards Port Alice. I was wondering what the community's opinion is regarding that.
It's mixed.
Okay, so a lot of people like it the way it is, the remoteness, I guess. One more thing too, I was listening with interest at discussion regarding the old tsunami siren. I don't know what condition it is in, but the village of Tassus is definitely looking for another siren. I put it in chat there. I don't know if you've noticed, but we have a terrible siren. It's very expensive and doesn't even cover the whole town, so. I guess that's a discussion I might want to have with Jerry or possibly the Campbell River Fire Department. I'm not sure. So just putting it out there.
That's great. Any further questions, Martin?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, great. Next hand up I see is Director Lee. Go ahead, Brenda.
Thank you. When we had an AVICC at Uqulit, I went on a tour to, I think, the village of Hyatt. And they showed us the housing there and the carving house and the community hall. Their housing was powered by solar panels. They put two, they put solar panels on all the houses roofs. And they, they managed to provide And they managed to provide power for heating and hot water. And they had extra, extra power to sell back to BC Hydro. So I mean, they had, they had a pretty good system of electrical supply with, with not having to worry about those lines.
Okay. We've actually just, sorry, I'll just respond real quick. We did submit an application for some infrastructure funds to put in a solar field as well for, to do just that.
Great, yeah. They were, they were heating their community hall to their hall as well as their housing. So they had lots of power there.
I went on that tour as well, I remember. I don't see any other hands up. Anybody have any more questions? Charlie, or Dr. Cornfield, I see your hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At one time, while we're on the issue of power, there was a proposal from the village to put in a windmill turbine generator. And wondered whether you have, can looked at or considered that, because it is an area that is subject to a fair bit of wind. And that was one, one part. And then I thought you, you had a very good political correct answer on the access issue. So to say that it was mixed is, yeah, it's been going on for years. Anyway, I just thought that was a little bit of the history. I know we had looked at potential for a windmill generator for that whole area way back when.
The problem with wind when we did a study was that we needed constant wind. Cayugat has a lot of wind, but it's strong wind. It's not constant wind.
Interesting. Director Colburn.
Hello, this is Backston. I'd be interested just to maybe have a conversation with you about process-wise, about, you know, some Miami sirens and that kind of funding. I know that funding streams may be different for us, but up here when we're kind of talking the same apples and apples, I'd just be interested in having a conversation with you offline at some point. So just wanted to flag that for you. I'll send you an email follow-up.
Sounds good, Julie.
Awesome. I don't see any other hands up, any other questions from members of the board? Seeing none, I'm turning this back now to John.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
So here we are at our last slide, which is really its next steps. And the big ones are the formal joining on April 1st, 2021, which you can think back to the beginning of this presentation, also marks the 10-year anniversary of the Menoth Treaty. So it'll be a a double celebration. And at that point, KCFN will become service participants in Regional Hospital District and General Government Services. And following 2021, we're still meeting as a, as a working group. And following 2021, there will be continued exploration of other service areas and collaboration, some of the things that Cynthia was talking about here with Cayugat and Walters Island, you know, the area in and around. And we mentioned some of these already with emergency, emergency management. In some of the working group meetings, there's been interest in building inspection and GIS on a contract basis. And if you remember, John Jack also talked about Huit having, you know, building inspection contract services, solid waste management with Cayugat and Walters Island area. And Home Away from Home, which is a new service area, was also, has been identified in some early talks about a potential area of interest because KCFN's citizens, you know, traveling to Campbell River for, for care, you know, would benefit as well from from the service area. And there's others that have been noted, but we'll be producing a little brief or memo on some of the outputs of the working group meetings that we've had up until this point. So that brings us to the, I'm going to stop sharing my screen here if I can. And that brings us to the end of our presentation. I don't know if there's any final comments or words. I'll pass it back over to the SRD.
Thanks. I just wanted to see if there's anyone had any more questions. Director Cornfield, I see your hand is up. I think you might be still muted, Director Cornfield. I don't, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Would it be possible to get copies of the slideshow and presentation that we had today? You know, into the Regional District? That way we can look at it in more detail and see and may perhaps have discussion about where we can interact on and maybe provide some contact information.
Madam Chair, we'll attach that to the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Lee?
Yes, I wanted some clarity from, since we have provincial government and, and other people here. When the First Nations talks about ownership of all these lands around, do they actually own them under the treaty or are they jurisdictional territory? Are the lands owned by, by KCFN, all of them, or are they under their jurisdiction?
Both. They own them and they have, the treaty lands are under their jurisdiction as well.
Okay, because I haven't actually read the treaty or anything. I don't know what the terms of that were. So so, and do you have freehold, do you have freehold title to all those lands?
Yeah, so those lands that were outlined in the turquoise and the one map that showed the treaty lands in comparison to the Regional District area. So those turquoise inspections, KCFN owning those lands in simple.
Oh, thank you, Kate.
And Director Lee, you'll also find that the orientation guide that was circulated will have all, all this information on this and even earlier questions in there as well.
Great.
Thanks, Director Lee. Director Kerr, you had a question?
No, just a comment. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone for participating today. And a personal note, I'd like to compliment Kevin Jewels for his presentation and the great job he did helping to facilitate the program today. I hope, I look forward to seeing you in person, hopefully at a meeting in the near future. So thank you, my friend. And thank you.
Thanks, Director Kerr. That's great. Director Anderson?
Thank you. Very similarly, just that I know that we had hoped to gather a year and a half ago before COVID hit. Perhaps we were contemplating even out in Cayugat Checkletis Territory and just acknowledged that it's awkward being so far-flung in distant places from Victoria to Cayugat to Cortez to Campbell River and beyond. And I'm just so glad that we were able to get together in person previously. And just profound compliments to KCFN for your generation of work to get to this point in your autonomous process. Just really hats off. It's a big, big effort. And I look forward to being around the table in person when we can. Bless.
Thank you, Director Anderson. I have Matthew. I don't have a last name showing on my computer. So Matthew, go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. Just general comments and, you know, thank everybody here today and good to have each and every one of you here and look forward to you know, this relationship between Cayugat Checkletis and the Strathcona Regional and the respected areas, you know, where everybody comes from. We all have our differences and our challenges and we'll bring all those together and through those we'll find our common grounds and be able to move forward in those areas. And, you know, it helps having all these minds that you can put together and move the big wheel forward and work together and, you know, for the safety of all of our citizens and everyone that we are working for. So I'm excited to be here and, you know, it's been a real challenge with COVID and everything and it can only make us stronger, I think, in the end, and coming together like this. And so thanks to Kevin for his strong presentation today and, you know, just a big, big thank you to everyone that has made it and to the meeting today. And it's good to be, to make, I couldn't get my video loaded or anything or the microphone or anything, so I called in earlier and unfortunately, I have my nine-year-old daughter who showed me how to she deleted the program, reloaded it, and then here I am.
Well, that's great. It's great that you have that assistance at home. That's awesome. Thank you so much. Kind words.
Thank you, guys. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I think I see, Kevin, your hand is up?
Yes, yes, thank you. And my apologies for the issues, the technical issues after lunch. I, I don't know what happened. I had, I couldn't, I couldn't sign in. Then I restarted my, the laptop. It wouldn't, it wouldn't start back up until after it updated. So that was the waiting. And a big, big thank you to Cynthia for taking over the slides and the presentation and with the bountiful information that she shared. I thank you and everyone at this table. Thank you, guys, for, for being here today and showing that we're, we're looking forward to moving, moving into the next steps and we're seeing that everyone is just as thrilled as us for April 1st. Thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, Kevin. And on behalf of the board, I wanted to say thank you very much for, to John and his team for coming with this workshop and to all the members of KCFN who've come here today. And we are anticipating a working relationship that's going to grow in the future. And I, for one, and I think I speak for everyone on the board, very excited to have our First, First Nation at our board table. Oh, I see another couple of hands have come up since I started talking. First, Tom, and then Director Cornfield.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just for the benefit of participants who may be asking themselves this question as to what's next. Between now and April 1st is a couple of months, of course. So we are working on what, what sort of formal recognition, whether there's some kind of a ceremonial thing or whatever that can take place during COVID. Those plans are still being worked on and we'll have more information as they become clearer. So that's kind of what we're thinking about in the next short while. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor, Director Cornfield, do you have something else you wanted to add?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. It was about the Comox Strathcona Regional Hospital District, which the intention of Cayugat Checkletis is to become or to be part of that service. And Samantha has attended a few of the meetings and as observer previously. We, I just wanted to let them know that we are, we had a mini strategic session, just hashing out what we were going to want to discuss at our strategic session, which is coming up in February. And so I think it would be really important for KCFN to make sure that they participate in that strategic planning session with the hospital district and offer any of their thoughts and concerns and issues. So if you would like to contact myself, I can fill you in at the love or the space we're at, or conversely, you can get a hold of the staff at the Comox Valley Regional District who administer what we do. So it was just that. And once again, say thanks. It was good to see and talk to everybody. And I get lots of fond memories of my times out in Cayugat. So you have a lot to work with. And so look forward to a bright and prosperous future for all of us.
Thank you, Director. Before I ask, call for a motion to terminate, Dave, did you have any comments that you want to make? I see on my agenda, there may be some wrap-up comments from our CAO.
Sorry, just muted there. No, I just echo the comments have been around the room. I think I would repeat everything that's already been said, but you know, I appreciate everyone coming together again and some great presentations, really learned a lot and fantastic getting together with the group again. We have, of course, been meeting quite regularly every couple of weeks. So it's kind of old hat for the group that's been the meeting on this work the last six months.
Thanks, Dave. So on that note, I will call for a motion to terminate.
So moved, Andy Adams?
Thanks, Director Cornfield. Anyone opposed? Probably not. Carried. Thanks, everyone. Really great to see everybody, even though it's during COVID.
Thank you.